Can you still see me?
Yep.
Okay, good. From City and State Borough, April twenty first, twenty twenty. We'll return it over to our city manager and let us go ahead and go through your agenda.
It is.
It was supposed to be three in a row. Testa.
So what works?
Okay.
Yeah.
Mayor, one of the council. Good afternoon. We do have council member Riggs on Zoom. And so we have all the council here. Today, in this work session, we have a number of items, three items that we want to talk about. But before I do that, I do want to take this opportunity to introduce to you our new director of planning and development, Kathleen Field. Kathleen started yesterday. And so we're happy to have her. She came back for a second day, so we're doing okay. So we appreciate her being here and welcome her to the team. Jason is real happy. Today, we wanted to do three things. We'll talk about the Creek on the Blue Mile. Add the feasibility study that's been done by Freeze and Nichols. And then we want to talk about the alcohol license, city and state laws. And then at the last meeting, we had a discussion about apartment development. So we want to talk a little bit about that and get some direction from council as it relates to how we move forward on that matter. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to, I think, George Kelly, who's with Freeze and Nichols, and he's going to be on Zoom, and y'all have to down and cry. And over here, and let George begin with the presentation.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Penny. I just ask everybody to let me know if you have any problem hearing me or there's anything else, you know, technologically that is causing you to have an issue. As Mr. Penny said, my name is George Kelly. I am the project manager for this feasibility study, this environmental feasibility study for Creek on the Blue Mile. And we are here today to bring it the results of, an update on the results of our Phase One flood feasibility portion of this contract. It's what we've been doing since the beginning of the contract back in December, or even before December. And it involves essentially the first phase of work, which we split out as that part that we found technically necessary to investigate first as a matter of efficiency and economy for the city so that we could determine whether to move forward or how to move forward from this point. And I might just start by saying the real conclusion of our report today is that it's good news in terms of what everyone was expecting in that we think it does present something that does look feasible at this point. But like I was saying, it only reports on Phase One, and there are two other phases to follow this one. Phase Two, which is a site feasibility, where we examine the site and collect data from the site and do analysis of the site. And then the third phase, which is the regulatory phase, where we take information to the regulators, talk to the regulators, and get their view of feasibility going forward. So with that, Lane, could you move to the next slide? I'd just like to say, this is what we have as an overall concept of the Creek on the Blue Mile. And I mean, this concept has been out there for some time now. It involves Little Lots Creek and the alignment of Little Lots Creek. I'm going to try to describe the graphics that are on these slides in a way that will help you understand them. If you have any questions as we go along, you can stop me and ask. But I know some of the slides, and because I really don't have control of a pointer or a mouse, I'll have to let you do that, or I'll have to try to describe it. And hopefully, I can be articulate enough to get the points across. What you see here is basically a image of the city, if you will. You probably recognize it with the streets involved and just the look of the city itself. And off to the left, you see this light blue area and adjacent to it, up about the number twelve and two and so forth, you see a dark blue line. That dark blue line proceeds from left to right across this image and is Little Lots Creek. That's right. Thank you, Lane. And it proceeds down through the pedestrian walkway and through the park, cross South Zetterhour and on out of the city into the existing creek alignment. So that's basically Little Lots Creek. And the light blue area to the left at the number one is essentially a reservoir. I mean, that's a part of this concept in that the reservoir is, and the dam that goes along with it are the regulating aspect of the features that will be a part of the Creek on the Blue Mile. But I think most of you are probably familiar with this. I won't go through explaining what all the numbers are. I just wanted you to sort of get accustomed to this figure because you'll see it several times in this presentation. And that light blue figure that's your regular shape there at the number one is basically a reservoir that we have. It's the concept of a reservoir that we have chosen to present today. And we'll just sort of go from there and explain things that we have done in our work so far. Lane, could you go to the next slide? The key features of this first phase were the hundred-year floodplain. In working with this project, we have to look at the entire watershed that contributes to Little Lots Creek and as it flows through the city of Statesboro. And the one-hundred-year floodplain and the mitigation of that one-hundred-year flood along that floodplain is one of the criteria that we're working with here. And what we've been analyzing and evaluating for the past few couple of months, maintaining a continual flow for the linear park that's downstream. It was also a criteria. We need to establish a means of a reservoir and a dam to capture the floodwater and then also to maintain continual flow through the linear park. And this area will also be the focal point for the Lannis Barrett Regional Community Park that envisions all sorts of recreational aspects for the community. And also included in the project and in our criteria is a backup surface water supply for the city. Lane, could you go on to the next slide? And in looking at this problem, we evaluated it in this way. This slide kind of describes the way we divided up the water basin, if you will, or the watershed. The irregular shape that is outlined in yellow to the left there. And once again, this is a graphic of the city, but we're, you know, fifty miles higher than we were before. And we're zoomed out so we can see more of the surrounding territory. And the yellow outline is the upper Little Lots Creek Basin. That's the upper basin, the part of the basin that will contribute to or will drain into a reservoir. And the lower part of the basin is the Little Lots Creek Lower Basin, and it drains into Little Lots Creek. And that's always going to happen, no matter what we do. If we build a reservoir and a dam in the upper part of the basin, it's going to capture the water that runs off of the land and into the creek in that area. And then the runoff that occurs inside the red outlined area will run to the creek and flow into the creek as it always has. And it will just be a matter of controlling that runoff or a matter of how we control that runoff as it does. So that's what we've been doing. And our analysis was divided into those two sections of the watershed, and it was modeled that way. We had two modeling sessions going on, I guess, two modeling efforts going on at once with different tools. And we modeled this upper basin for a dam and reservoir using very well-known hydrology tools. And we modeled the entire basin, including that part of the basin, using very well-known and used stormwater runoff tools, XP Swim and so forth. So that's what our teams have been focusing on for weeks now, looking at various ways, various existing conditions that are out there now, how this basin responds to floodwaters now, and also creating proposed conditions such as the new pedestrian walkway, the new reservoir, the new dam, and other features, and how they will respond to the floodwaters. Next slide, Lane, if you will. Okay, this graphic is meant to sort of tell us something about the floodplain or the floodway that exists through the Little Lots Creek area. And this is, again, the project area. You see the area to the left that says one-hundred-year floodplain. That blue color is an outline of what currently happens in the one-hundred-year floodplain. It shows the flooding that occurs. And that yellow, yellowish outline outside of the blue, that sort of borders the blue, is the five-hundred-year floodplain. So that's an even larger flood if it occurs. And you can see how this basin responds to those different levels of flooding, if you will. And then the red shaded line that kind of starts there at South College Street and the railroad and proceeds to the right is the FEMA flood zone and floodway that's indicated on the current flood maps, which is basically an area which disallows any development or improvement. And part of our effort was to try to mitigate as much as possible this one-hundred-year flooding in that floodplain and to minimize that flooding in that downstream area through the pedestrian walkway and the new park. So that's what Phase One was really all about. Is it possible to do that? Is it possible to create a reservoir, you know, through some means such as a dam and outlet structures? Inlet outlet structures and control the flow of water down Little Lots Creek so that the one-hundred-year flood would essentially have no impact in those areas when it occurs? Can you move to the next slide, Lane? Now, this slide shows what we have essentially found, and that is, off to the left again, you'll see the light blue area, and it shows again that one-hundred-year flooding, which we propose to contain within a reservoir and a dam. And to the right, you see how the floodplain with the floodway has been reduced essentially to the width of the the new proposed conditions on Little Lots Creek or on the pedestrian walkway. So that floodway can be contained within that footprint. And that floodwater can be passed away into the existing creek in other ways. And you can see the flooding off to the top, above the park, yes, right there. That will still occur, but it will also be taken care of through features and means within the park to pass it along into the existing Little Lots Creek downstream. And this one, this map indicates that the floodplain is mitigated essentially into the pedestrian walkway. Next slide, Lane. This graphic is basically a section which most of you have seen. It's a section of the pedestrian walkway that's located between the railroad and South College Street down to, I believe it is Fair Street. There's a section of the walkway that this sort of represents. And we show on this section the proposed floodway limits. And that's basically what you saw on the flood maps previously. The limits of Little Lots Creek will be contained within this cross-section as you see it here. It shows a maximum elevation up to like the sidewalk level. And it shows the depth of the creek at the pedestrian walkway, which is, I believe, seven feet. And it shows typical water level, you know, within the creek. And then proposed one-hundred-year flood elevation along the creek. And this, again, is the section between the railroad, South College Street, down to Fair. Can you go to the next section, Lane? The next section is similar and reflects the section between Fair and South Zetter, Zetterhour. So likewise, in the previous section, you see the proposed floodway limits, which are contained within the pedestrian walkway again. It shows the proposed one-hundred-year flood elevation at like sidewalk level and the different and various features of the walkway that will exist down in the park area. It shows typical water elevation and creek bottom. So so these are typical sections that are part of the concept. Can you go to the next slide now, Lane? Okay, key challenges for this project were essentially balancing the reservoir storage and the outflow from the reservoir, as well as the stormwater stream flow and the downstream inflow requirements. There was a lot, there's a lot of water that comes from a lot of different places within Statesboro. And as Little Lots Creek passes from the north to the south of this map, you can see that we're capturing floodwaters in the reservoir. And as we do, we need to release those waters for several reasons. One, to bypass into the stream so that we can continue to maintain our reservoirs' storage capability and also to make sure we have continual flow into the pedestrian walkway and the pedestrian area. And another key challenge was mitigating the flooding and maintaining continual flow in the linear park. So that's really where we're kind of, we've kind of reached today is we've done those things and we've seen that, yes, we can, given the given the criteria of this project with the concept that's been provided and the ideas that have been provided, we can balance that reservoir and stormwater and downstream inflow requirements with and mitigate flooding and maintain continual flow in the linear park. So that is possible. And that's where all of our efforts have sort of been focused so far. And we are considering various scenarios as we go through this study. Lane, if you'll go to the next slide. We have considered various scenarios. Here's another scenario that we're also considering. It's very similar to the one that's already been presented. It just shows, we'll say, a different layout for the reservoir and maintaining different permanent or water inflow requirements for the reservoir. So it shows just a different concept for how the reservoir and inlet and outlet structures can exist on the property that was given in the concept. So Lane, if you'll go to the last slide. The next phase that we have in front of us is site feasibility. The little graph there we show is just an example graph of reservoir storage versus time. And it's really just an indication of what we have to get into now with regard to the yield analysis for, you know, we'll say additional water supply in the reservoir. But within this site feasibility, we look at wetlands and streams, fish and wildlife, cultural resources. We're looking at environmental aspects. We'll do the yield analysis for the reservoir. We'll look at geotechnical. We'll do some borings, do a geologic study. And we're already doing the water quality testing as it had to start early. But we come today saying that we recommend that the city, you know, proceed with this effort and let's go kind of full head into Phase Two of the project. And with that, I mean, that's our recommendation from here is that hopefully we can proceed from here and move on into Phase Two and start all of the site feasibility work.
Mayor, members of the council, George, could I get you to do one thing? And this is from a manager, very simplistic of you, because he's given us a lot, given you a lot of information. Could we step back to existing floodplain and floodway? Can you go back to that? That this map here?
Yeah.
And recognizing why this is important. And I don't know that you completely explained this, but I want to make sure council understands. When we build a floodway, you can build in a floodplain, right? You can build in a hundred-year floodplain, right?
I believe you can.
In the floodplain, a hundred-year floodplain. But in the area that says floodway, you cannot build in the floodway, correct?
That's correct. That's my understanding.
You can build in the floodway because if you build in the floodway, you're going to jeopardize everyone in the city limits national flood insurance program. Okay, but it's also just a dangerous thing to do. But by mitigating this floodway area, and again, this is just simplistic for me, by mitigating that, go to the next slide. You see, floodway goes away. That's the mitigation. That's the mitigation. So what does that mean? That means as people are developing, all that area, go back to the last slide. You didn't build up any, okay? So and I, and to keep out of that, that was a mission or not?
It was, but it's also really important for the flood zone because even if you can build in that flood zone, ensure it's very complicated, ensure it's very high. So they opened it completely up for them.
So for me, I just want, and I forgot to say, we all on Facebook Live. So this is important for the public and this is important for council to also just understand the floodway you can't build in, and you can build in flood, in the floodplain, but go to the next slide. So you mitigate that, so you have more building area that you can develop and make more viable, more attractive. And honestly, in my speak, a very simplistic reason while we're trying to do this project. If we can make this work, then the hope of making that a vibrant, interesting area for our community is what we're trying to do. That's the reason for the project. Questions or comments from council?
Why is the area not north of Max Lockwood? Why is that not mitigated by the, by this project? And aren't we going to need to account for that flow? So what is at the top of the circle there with the little extension right there of Max Lockwood? What are we doing to, but yeah, right there, that's right. What are we doing to, you know, restrict the volume, control the volume? Because that looks like we just have a floodplain north of that, so.
George and Chuck Perry's on.
And that's a pipe that runs into there right now, isn't it? Is there a ditch? No, there's a pipe, right? There's a pipe through the Darby Company or the Darby property.
Some's covered, some's uncovered.
Yeah, north of Gentilly, Brandon, north of Brandon, it's open, but south of it, it's it's under the pipe, yeah. And then it goes, it goes under the dog park. So anyway, to answer my question, what are you going to do to mitigate that water? Control it, figure out how to get it into the system, that or George or Chuck?
Well, I think there are features that have been considered to do that. I'll have to turn it over to Chuck, since they're the ones that modeled the stormwater in the city. So Chuck, can you help me with that?
Sure. Good question. It's a, it's a little bit confusing. That area is outside of the study area that we were focused on, which was basically the limits of the project. The water that is coming through there, through that, through that pipe at Max Lockwood comes all the way through that park and discharges right before it gets to Zetterhour.
Right.
That water is being taken into account in the model as flowing into the newly constructed channel that will be part of the park area. And I would imagine that that flood area above Max Lockwood and north would be reduced. However, we have not really looked at that in detail as to the effects post-construction. So it was not modified as part of this, only the study area.
And then, I mean, this is a good report, but it looks pretty similar to what we've seen before. I'm curious, how many days, have you done the calculation? What kind of volume is in this ditch? And how many days can that reservoir hold water so that way the ditch? In other words, we're talking about the floodplain, but what about the other side? What if we have drought for thirty days and it doesn't rain? And I've seen that ditch there over by the hotel be completely dry. So how much water do we need to have in that reservoir to make sure that we have water in the creek all the time?
Well, that's a good question. That's a very good question. And we've tossed that question around ourselves, but we haven't answered that question per se because flooding was the criteria for this. The hundred year flood is the criteria. And if you're looking at drought and what happens during a drought to the, to the pedestrian walkway, we'll say. I mean, you, you will now have a reservoir which you can retain water in, you know, for as long as you can, providing a drought doesn't dry up everything in your reservoir as well. Uh, but, but, um, I mean, you know, that is a consideration that'll have to be looked at, you know, as, I guess, as part of the criteria for this, or at least as part of the feasibility of this. It, it would certainly be something that we could comment on in terms of, you know, if droughts occur.
And then there's one last question I had. According to schematic, you have, the water's going to be two feet deep.
Oh, in the pedestrian mall?
Is that what you're planning?
I think that's an indication of normal flow in the, in the, uh, pedestrian mall area. Can you move the slide down to the, uh, the cross-sections? The cross-sections of the, yeah, that, is that where you mean two feet? Uh, from typical water level down to creek bottom, two feet? Yeah. I am presuming that that is like normal, what you would use as a guide for your normal flow in your, in your.
Yeah, that's going to be your standard volume of water.
Right.
Okay.
And then it's like three feet from there up to the first step on the, on the sidewalk.
Yeah, I'm trying to determine the normal water level.
Yeah, yeah, that, that would be it.
Okay.
Keep in mind also that, you know, as far as the static conditions of the water flowing through the channel, this is different than what you've seen in, in Frederick calls Frederick wasn't getting it any type of continuous flow. Um, our, our model, our, our, um, our hope or our, what we're driving towards here is something that, that does have a continual flow. So it's not a, a stagnant pool where you would be growing, you know, a lot of bacteria and things in that, in that area because we are also using it for flood mitigation primarily.
Sure. Meaning what?
Meaning that when you have a significant rainfall event, um, there will be much more than two feet of water in the channel. It will rise and fall with the, with the flooding events.
Okay. I was just looking to see what, I mean, you know, I'm sorry, we have, uh, uh, you know, I mean, it rains occasionally, so I'm just curious to what the standard water level is going to be. Yeah, I understand it's designed to handle the flooding. I, I get that. I'm just trying to figure out. What's it going to look like on a standard basis and what kind of water you can put in there? How much flow? Cause again, you know, when it doesn't rain for three weeks, that creek dries up. And the last thing we want is a, is a waterway and a public walkway that has, that's dry.
But I think, but I think.
But I guess we're not there.
But, uh, I think the difference in this case is right now you don't have a lake, you don't have, how? So, so, but, but, but with this, you don't have a lake. And so it had to be a really bad drought, uh, not to have some water that would be flowing because the water is flowing from the, the lake through, through the ditch. And so George, George and Chuck, how deep are we thinking about for, for the lake bed?
Well, again, uh, like Chuck mentioned for the pedestrian walkway, it's a concept. You know, the reservoir is a concept and, uh, we know that we're trying to maintain, uh, depths in, in the reservoir. That will prevent the growth of certain vegetation and so forth. So, so, I mean, we are considering that as we look, but to answer your question about how deep is it? We're looking at a, trying to maintain a seven foot depth in, at normal pool. And, and of course that will vary because, you know, as you get floodwaters in and floodwaters out of the pool, it will certainly deepen certain areas of the pool, depending on the topology, uh, of the reservoir and so forth.
So thank you, George. Mayor Council. Again, this completes that first, that first phase of work. Uh, and, and again, we were, this is one of those milestones where we go and they'll go. The recommendation from the engineers is that we can have a project and, and well, at this point, there, there's nothing that should stop this project from proceeding. And so it's my recommendation that we authorize the engineers to move on to the second phase of the project, uh, which is the work is described and you can go to items to study a phase two, that, that's phase two of the work. Yeah, those things. And, and so if the council would authorize us to move to the second phase, then we will get them to, that we'll get them moving on that. Now, I will say that one thing that the, uh, engineers will be doing, I think on Tuesday, the, uh, crew folks will be meeting, they will be meeting with the engineers in a Zoom meeting as well, uh, so they can update folks. But one thing we'd like to say to them is that, um, at this point, the feasibility study keeps us moving on. And that the council at the part of that original contract, you know, with the eight hundred thousand dollar contract, this was the first milestone that we recommend we move on to, to that, to that second phase. And, and I will say this, George, I want to say, George and Chuck, I want to say this. I don't have to speak for the mayor and the council, but one thing that, that they're interested in, and I know this is not that next milestone, but, but I want to tell you because I'm on here, so I want to go ahead, put it on to engineers. What is really interesting to them, there's a lot of work that has occurred, but they're, uh, everybody wants to know how close were we on the estimate? And I'm not trying to get you to put that in front, but at some point, uh, in this process, we, we need to know. So we haven't, we're not designing it at this point, but, but what kind of costs? Were the cost systems good? I know that's something that the mayor and the council will want to know. And I also know that the crew folks want to know that as well, right here. And, and, and so I'm not trying to get you to pull anything forward, but I, I would just simply say to you, you need to know that that is one of those things, uh, that, uh, as a manager and as folks that are intimately involved in the project, they really want to know, uh, how close can we, can we get some, some numbers that, that, that can give us some idea on future going forward?
We're not going to have that until you have any actual engineering plans, right?
Well, we.
None of these are engineering.
Those aren't engineering plans, but we'd just like to know. Whether, if, if, if there's any way that they can give us a little idea whether that estimate is, is a, is a good estimate or do we need to be looking for additional funding?
Mayor, I have a question, please. So the first phase was looking at the floodplains, how water flows in space for whether this whole project was feasible from a waterfall standpoint, basically, what they're looking at in the first place. So just clarify for me what the next phase, the site feasibility, what are they looking at? What are they looking at? Tell us. Besides water?
I'm going to let the engineers explain it to us. George, can you help them?
Yeah, and, uh, also, Mr. Kenny, to address your question, were you asking a question? Were you asking us that question about your, your, how close were you?
Uh, um, I was, that was a comment.
Okay. All right. Well, I know our, our opinion of probable construction cost is a part of the scope of this work. So, you know, we will get to that eventually as the contract goes on. But to answer, uh, the question of the councilman, um, regarding the next phase, I mean, the next phase is going to involve, um, uh, a crew going out and doing some geotechnical borings, uh, on, on the properties, you know, at the, at the site of the reservoir and dam. And so that we can gather some information from, from, uh, from soil samples that we take and study the subsurface geology in the area. And, I mean, all those things are important to knowing whether or not, you know, uh, uh, or how feasible or what type, what kind of dam can be built, we'll say, and reservoir can be impounded. Uh, so that'll be a part of it. We'll, we'll look at wetlands, uh, that surround the current, uh, existing Little Lots Creek. There are wetlands in the area of the creek. We'll map those and there'll be a determination made about the jurisdiction of that, I guess. And we'll also do fish and wildlife studies that are required, uh, for um, this type of work, you know, by regulation. Uh, we'll also study cultural resources in the area of the project, uh, which are also required, uh, in order to satisfy certain, I think, NEPA requirements and so forth. There will be a safe yield analysis performed, uh, for the reservoir, determine, to determine, uh, what the, what, what yield, uh, we can expect, uh, how much water we can expect to have to, or, or to be able to, uh, reserve for, for domestic water use. And, uh, there's water quality testing that's already ongoing, both in the stream and in subsurface in order to test groundwater and surface water quality. So those are the things that we'll proceed to on a, I, I guess, a, a higher level or on a, a more continual basis.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions, what else? See, there is no, I'm going to move forward. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, George and Chuck.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, Member of the Council, we're getting ready to move to our next slide. Oh, King Smith?
Mayor Council, uh, you can all hear me fine, sure. Councilman Riggs, can you hear me okay?
Uh, I can.
Okay. So, um, what I was asked to do today was do, was to compile a, a study of local ordinance or state law on, on alcohol licensing. So state law does not require any decisions to be made by mayor and council outside of setting ordinances and licensing requirements. Any duty currently charged to mayor and council in chapter six of our code ordinances could be granted to another internal party such as city manager, city clerk, or one of the public safety chiefs. Lane, can you go two slides ahead? So what I did is I just went topic by topic, um, so we could just get, get a piecemeal on, um, how the state and local, um, laws go. So catering, uh, the city law and, uh, state law and state regulations, they're not distinguishable. What is, uh, what is allowed in the city, in the state? And we follow their, we track their regulations carefully with the, uh, with all the, um, transportation requirements and all that. The caterers themselves are responsible for adhering to those state regulations. When it comes to, it comes to insurance, um, the state does not require insurance for alcohol licensees. Uh, we do in the city, um, that's where, that's set out in six five D four. That's, uh, due to, you know, our past history of, of lawsuit. When a, when an establishment was not insured, it fell, you know, that's why the city, one of the reasons the city ended up getting sued is because it was not recoverable from the business owner. In aftermath of Michael Gata's, um, death, the state, they put forward Michael's law at the state level. Michael's law covered, he covered underage admission of bars, he covered bouncer requirements, and it, and it covered insurance for, um, for licensees. The two aspects of Michael's law, the bouncer and, uh, and the underage admission of bars were both passed at the state level, but the insurance was not at state level. We would move forward with this because other jurisdictions have done it and because of our prior history. So now we'll get down to proximity. Proximity is, you know, how close can the business be to these protected entities such as churches, schools? And, um, and, uh, you know, drug treatment facilities, all that. So package sales, those are, uh, that's not just bottled liquor. That's anything that's to go. Package sales proximity is governed by state law with, with our state departments, with the same state requirements set out in our, uh, code ordinances, six seventy. On premises sales, those are by the drink sales, those proximity requirements are governed by, um, that is left to the local entities to determine what is allowed by the drink. And, uh, our requirements are set out in, uh, six seven E. And, uh, within the city, on premises consumption, uh, licensees are not allowed to a hundred feet of a church building, school building, educational building, school ground, college buildings or college campus there. And like I said, that is completely within local jurisdiction, how sales were done, uh, for on premises consumption. Let's move down to open container. The state prohibits open containers inside vehicles. That is, that is a statewide law. You are not allowed to have an open bottle about, an open container of alcohol in a vehicle. There is no other state law regarding open container laws. That's why you see these open container exemption songs in our jurisdictions. That's why you're allowed to walk along River Street with a clear plastic cup because that's governed by Savannah law. They've made the decision to do an exemption song with those restrictions in that area. Lane, can we get to the next slide, please? So now we're to underage admission. This is a, this is a complicated one. The state sets bars and defines bars as any establishments that have seventy percent or more of their sales from alcohol. Underage admission to these, um, these state bars is allowed for in, um, ACJ three, three, twenty-four, one, which in S S says that, that underage admitties are allowed for actual live performances. Furthermore, the state does not have a kitchen requirement. Number of times, um, annually, the bar can hold all ages or eighteen and up events or requirement of even additional permit to have those, um, all ages events. That is, as long as it's a live musical or performing parts. Going on, they are allowed to have under twenty-one in their city. We set bars at the sixty percent as opposed to seventy percent. So anything over sixty percent of sales in, uh, Statesboro is going to be classified as a bar. Underage admission is prohibitive in bars unless there is an operating kitchen and the licensee has gotten a city issued underage permit that allows for six events annually. The city knows this requirement. Chapters, uh, section six nine sets out our restrictions on underage admission by license. Different categories such as pubs, restaurants and bars and, um, restaurants being the most lenient and bars being the least lenient. The bar without a kitchen in the city just simply cannot have under twenty-one admitties in there. Whereas a restaurant can have under twenty-one admitties, basically whenever they're operating as a restaurant. We have those different classifications. You know, we have the state just says you're a bar or you're not a bar. Uh, Statesboro has the restaurant, pub, the performance venues. We have those, uh, ones that we came, I think that was about two years ago, Councilor.
Yes, and primarily to offer other licenses that were less expensive than a standard bar or anything.
And we, but we, uh, before that, it had been, it was a six nine was a, was a lot of required police department designation of, and when they would have their clothes, their, their time with underage. their, their time with underage admission was no longer allowed and underage people were no longer allowed to remain on premises either. That was done individually on case by case basis. Now we have these actual license classifications as opposed to just an whole premises license. So wait, can we get to the next slide, please? Distilled spirits, package sale of distilled spirits is prohibited in the city of Statesboro and in Buller County. That requires a voter referendum in order to, in order for us to conduct those sales in our jurisdiction. Employees, our bouncer requirements are the same as state law. Section six ten C, Mayor's, ACGA three three twenty four one A. So we do exactly what the state requires. And I do want to be clear on something. State law is a baseline that cannot be gone under. There's, a local government cannot be more lax than the state law requires. Of course, a local government can be more restrictive than the state requires, but, so that's why the bouncers and the catered events, those are, those are going to track state law perfectly because those are the minimum requirements that the state of Georgia requires. Pricing, we have our restrictions set out in six sixteen of our code ordinances. That is solely a city construct. They does not have any laws pertaining happy hour, any drink specials, anything like that. They don't have those. We do have some, we work closely with alcohol advisory board and local bar owners in order to craft the pricing restrictions that's set out in six sixteen. When it comes to the excise taxes on alcohol, we are as high as is allowed under state law. We cannot increase our buy the drink or package taxation. We are at the, as high as we can get. Nonprofit special events. This is what would say a charity organization wanted to have a wine auction or they wanted to, any five oh one C three organization is allowed to have six nonprofit special events. Nonprofit special events is when that charitable organization actually buys directly from the distributor and then sells or offers as in exchange for donation directly to the consumer. There's, there's not really the retail level there. Like there's catering where the party host has to buy from the caterer and they can't sell it at the event. At these nonprofit special events, they are allowed to sell at the event. And our nonprofit special events law is exactly the same state law. So. There we go. So let's talk about special events here. Special events, what I'm talking about here is special events for non charitable organizations. This would be for pop ups or events or, let's say we were having an open air festival in downtown. You know, we would, we would allow these, that's what these licenses would be for, for pop ups or held, held anywhere where there were not, I mean, non licensed premises. So this would apply to cash bars. Anytime admission, payment, or donation solicitation is performed at non licensed premises. Under, this is, this is a fairly recent, this is a fairly recent area of state law that allows the granting of these special events permits. You know, there are major states in the state that allow them. We are one of the few that allow them. And we do have, we do have overstate, overstate requirements on applications. The city only allows city licensed caterers to apply and requires a forty five day application advance. The state allows any party to apply with a ten day advance. And the party must have the city and state permit in order to conduct special events. So these jurisdictions where you don't have any sort of local licensure apparatus, these special events are not allowed, Councilboy. Yeah, we, we offer something that most, that most jurisdictions don't offer. We just have it restricted above and beyond what the state requires on that. So let's move down to violations. The city conducts violations hearing and penalizes licensees for those violations. The state conducts a parallel but separate proceedings with the same incident. So what we have with that is we had a situation a few years ago where Walgreens, I believe it was Walgreens, they got a twenty five day suspension from us and then the same violation went before the state. They got additional thirty day violations, so thirty day suspension. They got fifty five day suspension. So what we did is when we started bringing in that administrative judge to hear our license, our hearing, our violation hearings, we also did a penalty schedule and we crafted the penalty schedule to be much more in line with what the state's wanted. But the way this works is they will get a ticket from this, from the state police department and we will notify the Department of Revenue. And then, so they get hit on the local and state side. So we were very careful to craft that penalty schedule. That did come before council when it was adopted. When violations are done, they do a three year look back to determine the number of violations because they go up with how many violations within a three year look back. We did our look back to correspond identically with the state. It is three year, but for state and local violation hearings. All right. Licensing and prohibition. So the state sets out basic licensure requirements in the Georgia Administrative Code five sixty. The city regulates licensure in accordance with the powers granted by state law and is set out in our city code ordinance in section six six and six thirteen C. It is required under state law that the city put ascertainable standards for licensure into the ordinance. We do have those both in six six, the prohibitions and the six thirteen consideration. And we also restrict licensing in six seven that interests of public employees and officials is prohibited. And then license shall be granted to city, state, or federal employer of official duties including the regulation or policing of alcoholic beverages or licenses or any other tax activity, tax collecting activity. Like I said, these, that is not within the, that's not in the state law. Their requirements are the same as ours when it comes to felonies and misdemeanors that you have. They're, what we want to do is we want to make sure that our minimum guidelines are the same statement guidelines. We don't want to approve the licensee and then it gets to state and say, wait, can't get one at the state level. So we do have those minimum requirements already in there. We do have a couple additional prohibitions as well, namely the, but the one that really sticks out is the, is that one six seven I that I have set out on there. So. Council options as of now. All right. So council options would be allow chapter six to remain in its current state or to give direction to staff regarding what aspect should be reviewed and surveyed or compared with other local governments and direct staff as to urgency of making reviews and revisions for presentation.
So as of right now, being an elected official, I cannot do that.
That's correct. And furthermore, it would not be able to get that. So no license within, because of the council's regulation of alcohol beverages that not only does council approve or deny alcohol applications, the council also has the ability to, to hear appeals on licensure violations. And so, but the way it stands now, because council does have that power to those regulatory powers that, under local law, that an elected official, not just city council members, but any elected official.
But it's not a state law.
It's not a state law.
Any further questions, Council? I do have a couple of questions. Open containers, the city regulates and, or yeah, it's open containers fairly through six seven, thoroughly through six seventeen. Is this an area that we need to regulate, opening up downtown Statesboro for open container?
Yes, Mayor, any sort of, the way it stands now is y'all are able to grant exemptions to every container. But if you, but any sort of exemption zone or, or change in those container laws outside of vehicles within the city of Statesboro would be, would be addressed through that section, that ordinance section.
So if we wanted to make downtown Statesboro the area we can have open container, that's what we would address that?
Yes, Mayor.
Currently, the DSDA, any sanctioned DSDA event that has open containers with the DSDA, that's correct?
That's been our policy, yes.
That's written in the ordinance, isn't it?
The open container?
That the DSDA has an exemption that any sanctioned.
Yeah, for their sanctioned events.
That's correct.
Yes, yes, absolutely, I apologize.
Either they're sanctioned or part of it.
Right.
But the goal is for this area to have open container regardless of whether it's DSDA or not?
That would be all decisions tonight. But that's certainly within the power of mayor and council.
What's council thought on making downtown Statesboro open container?
So right now, as it stands, DSDA is the only one that can approve open container bouncers?
And at this point, count, DSDA, DSDA has, they have a quinian exemption. They do not make the decisions on whether they have container exemptions. That, that comes through y'all. And the most typically, what we normally see on open container exemptions would be, say, the parking lot over Eagle Creek. We get that one a good bit because it is a semi-public parking lot. So it falls under our open container prohibition. But like I said, outside of the vehicle, it is entirely within mayor and council's powers to determine how open containers should be governed.
So can, when, when the parking lot becomes, they want to do a party in the parking lot? For the open, that has to come before council or?
Yes, there's been, and it has, and it has been. Those, they were coming in fairly consistently for Franklin and speaking of Eagle Creek was getting them fairly regularly for a while, especially during the fall.
Yeah, and so if downtown Statesboro is an open container space, we don't have to deal with it.
That's correct.
So can I ask about the history? Tell me about DSDA downtown, what kind of a business? They're covered under a point of exemption, I understand that. When is it actually coming to play?
It really hasn't, I don't think, because we only think that, because at this point, I don't know that we have anywhere in the DSDA area that has open bottle drink sales. That's what it would have been allowed for is when we had a couple of businesses within, you know, besides possibly Creek. You know, the container exemptions could work then, you know, it's like during Taste of Statesboro because you could go in to a place and you could leave with a drink, but it doesn't come up very often.
So would they happen if it was the first Friday? Unless they were the restaurant downtown, they could go into that restaurant, purchase a drink, and then bring it outside during the first Friday?
That's correct.
So that can happen right now? If there was a.
It's already happened in the past, probably for the last, what, six months? Yeah, the Christmas, the Christmas first Friday, just in December. You know, if you could do a little thing. No, I mean, just the two, just the brewery and the bakery and the candlestick maker.
So right now, it has to be a realistic event. So for example, you know, having to be able to get a downtown, it's, you know, vital. And we've got restaurants and bars and whatever venues downtown. Currently, right now, they could not leave those venues and go to another venue. So that, for example, if you were in a restaurant, you wanted to go over to a sports bar, you couldn't do that.
That's correct.
So that's what the goal is. The goal is to be able to, what you can do with a DSDA.
You would have to drink that drink inside that building.
And then go to the.
And then go to another. Even if it's three feet away.
Yeah, because next door, you can't walk out of that building and go into.
As soon as you, as soon as you exit, especially beyond the curtilage, if they have, like you say, they have tables out in the sidewalk cafe area, that, that would fall under. Anything else, yes, is, is living on, as Tommy said, illegal, beside, or I think it's around three hundred fifty four or five.
And so let's say another entity wants to do an event downtown. Yeah, exactly. And so, and, and, and what the goal is on background as far as even to address this is that we got to bring some life to our downtown here. And right now, we, the truth of the matter is that downtown is not about business anymore. It's about entertainment. And if we're going to bring life back, you know, I think that adults that can go out there, that can buy a drink, we can trust them to walk across the street or walk down the block. And you see, this is happening across the board, across the country. This is the best practice. So that's what the goal is, to update alcohol ordinances so that we can be competitive with other companies.
Like I said, this is, and if this was something I wanted to do, and so this is a very easy thing. Just describe the parameters, what you wanted, that sort of exemption zone. What would be the board's.
Well, my thought process is to identify what would consider the city center and then make that area our own container area. So that we can, maybe, maybe this would be a plus for another business to come and open up downtown. And, you know, and I would worry about their clients or customers not being able to enjoy our downtown. Okay, so I would, I for one would like to see this move forward. I'd like to see staff put together a ordinance on this. Council, any feedback?
Oh, we, we just do our ordinance ordinance, we're going to have to vote on this at the regular meeting. So we'll put that on the next agenda.
No, I can, I can instruct the staff to do it.
No, no, according to the.
Yeah, so we would like to go ahead and see that move forward.
Is it for the whole ordinance or is that one?
We're just going through, we're just going through it bit by bit. So and what I want to do is just go by a line out of my line, I have to readdress them as we get to.
So my understanding, Mayor, is that you want to direct staff to go ahead and draft an ordinance about how we might designate downtown, how it could be on an exception to your container. So you can't be in a vehicle with an open container in Statesboro, anybody's state, Georgia. But if we draft this, then there would be a downtown area that you would specify where you could be walking around with a neat string of beer glasses on your hands. And the main rationale is you think it will help attract more business downtown?
Yeah, absolutely. We got to bring life to our downtown. It's just a simple thing. To be honest with you, I'm going to be transparent, clear. City of Statesboro alcohol ordinance is off of arcade and draw for penny. And it's really holding us back in many aspects as far as us being able to have a lively downtown. And if we're moving forward, we're putting eight hundred thousand dollars into the creek project, then we need to be able to have some, some metal as it relates to how do we create a area that's going to be lively and vibrant? And so we got, we got a great project on our hands right now with downtown. So let's go ahead and figure out what it looks like. And then when the creek project comes online, we're going to simply take what we're doing downtown, place it onto the creek project. So that's what the thought process is.
Well, I'd, I would like to go over section two two four just to address what Councilboy had said, if that's safe and proposed revisions shall be brought up as an agenda item in a regularly scheduled meeting of mayor and council or during other business of a regular scheduled. or during other business of a regularly scheduled meeting. And then person, and then the, before the city attorney drafts the revision, the affirmative vote of the majority of council, a majority of forum, forum has to move, or that's revision, or it is, it's two two four. So it does say it needs to be brought at a regularly scheduled meeting of Mayor Council. As an agenda item there or under other business that are regularly scheduled meeting, says this is in place of a regularly scheduled meeting. I think, I think a vote currently to move forward in directing the-
This is not an official meeting, Dean, I'm sorry, this is a work session, it's not an official meeting.
Right, I mean, but since we, regardless, I'm just reading the thing, I understand.
So are you thinking-
And if we had our meeting, I'd be happy to do it tonight, but we don't have any-
You think you may be able to do it, since we did notify it, it says to the public, do you think maybe we can?
It just simply says it a regularly scheduled meeting.
So it says specifically whether it was a work session of City Council?
It doesn't, I mean, we didn't have work sessions when we wrote this, anyway, and we're not having a regular meeting today.
So read the language again?
Proposed revisions to the head of the ordinance says shall be brought up as an agenda item in a regularly scheduled meeting of Mayor Council or during other business of a regularly scheduled meeting.
A regularly scheduled meeting?
This is a work session, not a regularly scheduled meeting, a regularly scheduled meeting, you're at five thirty.
Maybe we need every second to, every hour or two to-
At five thirty.
So that's regularly scheduled, is it not, and it says regularly, it just says regularly scheduled meeting.
So, so he's the new work session?
The debate about whether or not we're allowed legally to do it now, if, if we think we're not allowed legally, then what happens is two weeks from now we do it instead of doing it now.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, we fine, we fine.
Two weeks, well, I'll make, I'll get them this far to make sure we get it on the next one.
Okay, and so let us move forward. On that agenda issue. Any questions for us, for some?
So this is what we'll put on the agenda for the first meeting in May? Okay, and this is just to ask that, look into it?
Right, to direct me to draft a revision.
So it's not just to look into?
So that is entirely too complex, because like, right now, we're wasting time. We, we, I mean, to, to vote, to ask staff to do that, that's, that's entirely too complex. So we need to address that, so the next work session, let's have a, a conversation about that. Because we should be, as elected officials, we should be able to tell you right now, yeah, to tell you right now to go ahead and do it.
I think so.
Yeah.
So we're not voting on anything, no, so we just give you, you permission to do that?
Yeah, I mean, this is, I'm, I'm telling you, the laws of this city have been written in such a way that it was so focused on preventing, stopping, and punishing people, that we can't get nothing done. And it's, it's, it's highly frustrating.
Mayor, this ordinance is a best, or you're resuming a new point?
Because I thought it was a deliberate effort to undermine the power of the mayor position. I said nothing then because it wasn't politically astute to do so, and I was trying to work with the council. So I know exactly when it was passed, I wouldn't agree with it then.
Well, then you didn't say anything else?
Exactly, I had to pick my dogs to fight.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I know who pushed it.
Yeah, I said, because there was too much of this, doing things at the last second without public notice. And here we are, trying to vote in a work session and not do things according to the rule.
Exactly, but you're making the rules up, you got, the council is making up the rules, and you're making up the rules, this, the whole alcohol ordinance, that particular ordinance, all of these things are being done in a punitive fashion. And if we have not learned anything else in this country, punitive does not work, it does not work. And we're tripping over our own feet because individuals that does not have appreciation for public policy are creating laws to govern the populace, and the populace is suffering because of it.
I have a question, though, is, are you against it because you think we're gonna vote on making a change right now? Or you just don't want staff to look into it right now?
We have, we have a process to follow.
A process that was made up by council?
We have a process to follow.
It was one person pushing it.
It's here, go ahead, go ahead. Where is it?
We have a process to follow that we all agreed upon, and I don't see one.
I don't know.
We, we have a process that we all agreed upon.
No, we did.
It was voted on unanimously. Council makes these decisions, we passed that particular rule for one reason, and that's because ordinances were being brought up without everyone being known about it, and they were being popped into council meetings, like, you just may show up with a, with an ordinance, like, boom, this passes.
And everything that he's talking about, everything that he's talking about is coming from an entirely different era. He's talking about the wheel grid area, he talks about-
It's two years ago.
No, it, this was, it was passed two years ago, but all of the examples that you're talking about right now came from an era that was previous to the McCullough administration.
That's not true.
Like what? Like, like?
Like your committee?
We took eight months on those committees, something else, please. Yeah.
We have a process that we all, it's, why is it a big deal?
What's gonna happen in two weeks with the open?
It's not a big deal, we can't even go downtown.
Right, I can get what you're saying.
There's no rush for this, it's not like, all of a sudden we're gonna have open container in two weeks.
I just wanna get clarification because I'm new.
Yeah.
And it's kinda confusing on why, I do understand with the mayor saying that if we're not passing anything, we're just asking staff to look into it.
That's correct.
Why can't we do that right now? And I wanna hear why you feel that it's not right, because it may not be right, I just don't know yet.
If this was a regularly scheduled meeting.
But it said that even in, it said a regularly scheduled meeting or other business?
Other business in, that's part of the agenda.
Okay. So, okay.
I mean, if we have a regular meeting, we just vote on it, I don't see what the big deal is. The idea was to make sure that all the council members are informed of potential changes to ordinances, and that we all get to discuss and, and, and have a sit. You represent the people in District Three, you represent the folks in District Two, District Five, Jones and District Four, we all represent those districts, not as individual, these chairs represent those folks. And all the people up here, who are sitting up here, deserve to have the information upfront and not be surprised, that's why we put that in.
Well, are you comfortable with this?
Yeah.
Going forward and asking staff to look into it?
Yeah, if we had a meeting, if we had a meeting, I would call the process and I would vote on it in another twenty minutes, but we don't have a meeting, we have a call.
It's just not, it's just not the time.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and what should we do?
Just wait two weeks.
It's, it's just a regularly scheduled meeting.
Can we move forward now?
Well, I mean, it's, we have a majority of council that publicly knows this. It is a scheduled meeting, it's, and it's in lieu of a mandated meeting. I mean, if we wanted to wait till five thirty to do it, is our mandated one under section two, whatever we can.
Can you vote in the work session? Can you conduct official business in work?
We don't have, no, you have to do an official business based on what the notice is done. And that is, there's no, this is the problem here, we don't have a set of laws to say this is regular session, and this is work session, we're, you're looking for laws that don't exist.
Charge says one of our regular sessions are first and third day.
Right, so that means at five thirty, that it's a regularly scheduled meeting.
Except we didn't post the agenda and we didn't put a public notice.
Right, that's, that's, we can do it as well.
Man, Al, or you- I mean, you're gonna, that's me for something.
I think that we should follow and do the right procedure, and we can only get that procedure from change. I mean, you had to say, to say legally what we can do, I do understand what party doesn't see so bad, that we shouldn't get anything and be surprised about it, but we're not surprised to know that we're gonna be talking about this thing. I do understand Jonathan saying, you know, that we waste the time, which we are, so legally, what can we do? Can we move forward or should we wait?
It says, I hear like, scheduled meeting, I don't know, this is not a section two, three meeting of council, but it is a scheduled notice meeting of council.
Can you take your question?
Yeah, okay, for the, for the sake of confusion, we'll, we'll put it on the agenda for the first meeting in May.
Thank you.
And then for the work session on two, on, on Thursday, two, two, on Tuesday, or May, put that, that section two thing up there so we can address that. Yeah, yeah. Alrighty. All right, this still spirits, there's nothing we can do about that. At this point in time, unless we're in a, a community group that moves, or wanna fight, get alcohol back practices in the city, employees, cops, you know, saying state law, OCGA through there's, we there's two, four, pricing restrictions set out in six sixteen, taxes are allowed by state law, non, non-profit special event, is there anything that we wanna touch base on? Special event information, special events generally applies to cash, pause, commission, payment, or donation solicitation at non-licensed places. City only allows licensed caterers to apply and requires forty-five day application advance. State allows any party to apply within, with ten day advance, party must have both city and state permit. Any conversation on that?
Who would mention, mention of the date, otherwise, dating rate will change.
Okay, anybody else?
One to that point, sorry.
The ten days. I'm sorry, instead of having the city with a forty-five day application, unless the chief had some kind of a, you don't need that much nerve, no, okay. So, yeah, I mean, just, just so it's more consistent for a little while. Certainly, through that.
All right, Councilwoman Matt.
So I said I don't put the ten days.
All right, says state allows any party to apply within ten day advance, party must have both city and state. So currently, only caterers can apply for this in any city, state, or record.
That's correct.
Okay, so state says, state says anybody can apply.
That's correct, okay, council, how do you feel about that?
I think we should make a line with the state.
Anybody else? Okay, that's two weeks.
We gonna need, so we're gonna put that on this agenda in the same way, same order.
All right, violation, city conducts violations hearing and penalizes licensees, state conducts parallel but separate proceedings for same incident, city penalty schedule was considered and dropped, not duplicate state penalty schedule when you look like same state, any questions on violations? Next one, licensing state sets out basic license requirements from GAC, GAC five sixty dash two dash two dash oh, oh, two, that's called. And you said you will share that with the city council with me?
If they would like, I was mainly just saying it's such a long comment.
So if anybody wants to follow on that, please let them know. City regulates licensure in accordance with the powers granted by state and OCGA, three dash, three dash two, that's set out in six sixteen four vision, and six to, six thirteen consideration, it's required that city put acceptable standards for license records. City also restricts licensing to five, six, seven, as follows, interest of public employees, this is prohibited. No license should be granted to any city, state, or federal employee or official who do not include regulation of or policy of alcohol beverages or licenses in fact, in tech, tax letting activity. Okay, any questions on this one, by council?
Is this the same as the state or is this local?
That's solely local, okay.
We'll forward the discussion, by council.
I think that me, as a business owner, owner of the here side, if I wanted to serve wine to my clients, I feel that I should be able to do that, that was something that I was doing before I became city council. I had to stop, of course, because of being on the council, but I think that that is something that should be looked for as well.
Anybody else?
You want the city looking at what the state is and how, how much more restrictive we are and what our options are?
And so, at this point right now, with the state, can, right now, we, we bar officials, employees, who's barred from not having a license, alcohol license, based on state statute?
I mean, not, not based on positions, trust.
Yeah, but, yeah, exactly.
Of course, there are protections, but not on, based solely on positions and trust.
All right, and so this is a statesful thing?
Yes.
I think it's your power to speak with the government.
Yeah, I think it should go along with the state on this one.
So what we're doing is directing staff to bring this back to us to talk about it on the next meeting, thank you.
Come with me.
Just clarify on who we are.
I know, I know, I'm saying what you can.
I think making sure the public gets informed, know that council members are adequately informed is, is honestly worth the extra little bit of coverage.
Okay, all right, all right, so, so we're comfortable with moving forward for the first meeting made with these items, correct?
I have three items currently, one is to look at the, one is to look at special events, on the general special events, the nonprofits, one is to look at an open container exemption zone, and one is to revise six seven so that it does not have the interest of public official provision, and that's what, the way the presentation works, go, go with the right meter, draft these revisions, and then be brought back for first reading and second meeting in May, if they pass the first meeting in May.
Hey, would you do me a favor, put those individualized, as individualized, also, I think, copy when I'm voting on all three of them?
Yes.
Thank you.
We don't need to vote on that. Yeah, all right, so with that being said, we'll move down, any other conversation around that, I think? Seeing that there is no, we'll move on down to agenda item three, just put there. So the council options, I want to make sure that I, these items here allow- Yeah, we're going with, we're going with B. Okay. Go with B? Okay. All right, Lang, will you post that, we're gonna be about fifteen minutes on that line?
I'm sorry.
The line, we're supposed to go live at six P M?
Okay.
You'll need to post it, we're gonna be about fifteen minutes later on that.
Sure.
All right, all right, so apartment development discussion, Mr. Camp, Mr. Penny, I'm gonna turn that over.
Thank you, Mayor. There, if you mind, if you give me about five minutes, if you want, if we should just take a little break.
Okay.
About five minutes.
All right, all right, you're telling, we said for five minutes.
Update audio part.
Thank you, Mayor, and Mr. Council. At, at the last meeting, um, council, and this has been, council, that you may resist. It addressed a great deal of interest, and then at the last meeting, council member, boy, um, we had a matter as related to single family housing. Um, but, uh, gave him some direction, I asked you to delay it until this meeting. Uh, and, and part of, when I introduced Kathleen Field, um, and then, I want to make sure, one of the things that I say to you about Kathleen. Kathleen brings to city Estatesboro, uh, a great deal of planning experience, over twenty three years of planning experience, and we're very happy to have her. And I think she's gonna be able to help us with a lot of things that, that we need to do as far as updating our ordinances and, and looking at this matter. So we're, we're happy to have her here to help us with those things. Um, but, but as we talked about, uh, situation in Estatesboro, I just wanted just briefly remind you of our current situation. And, and when you look at the graph, you see that the total number of housing units based on two thousand eighteen numbers is roughly twelve thousand three hundred forty nine units of housing in the city. Yeah, but then when we look at our, our, uh, the breakdown of those housing units, we look at owner occupied units. And in our city, we're at about, just, just about twenty five percent, twenty four point five percent own occupied properties. Uh, and then when we look at tenant occupied properties, we just under sixty three percent of the population. But, but again, that's not bad news, uh, and, and I'll show you another graph, but when we look at our city, our city, we have, um, the university, Georgia Southern University, uh, we have East Georgia State College, we also have a P T Tech. And so we have, uh, a young population, uh, and that student population is integrated into, into our community. And so that, that drives that number. And so, so when we look across state in, in Georgia, uh, we look at how many properties are tenant occupied statewide. And it's thirty seven percent, but you look at, again, our city, we're at sixty two percent of tenant occupied properties. Uh, and so, but when we're looking at our community, as far as multifamily, uh, units under development, right now, we don't have any projects that are underway. Uh, currently, uh, uh, when you, when you look at our community, we have about four thousand apartment units. And that four thousand apartment units, maybe, it represents a large number of bedrooms. Uh, it might, and, and the number I don't have in front of me, but it's in the thousands, it might be nine to ten thousand bedrooms that are in those four thousand, four thousand units. So, uh, the, the concern as we look at our community is, um, what things can we do, uh, to sort of change that? Well, one, I think it's gonna be awfully hard to go, when you bring eighteen thousand five hundred students into your community, if they all don't stay on campus, they're gonna be in the community. So, so that, that's an important part of our economy. And, and so that part, uh, we, we know, uh, is something that, that we, we will have to address. But how do we increase homeownership in Estatesboro, and that's an important fact. So when we're looking, talking about homeownership, we can't just be talking about middle and upper income people, we gotta talk about all levels of, of the economy, workforce housing, and things of that nature. But, when we're looking at the, the multifamily units, one of the things I asked staff to do for me is to look at our current, um, zoning. And, and, uh, I can't point, but you see all those yellow dots, uh, and right now, we have four thousand units of apartments. But all of those yellow dots represent, uh, our four zones. And out of those R four zones, those zones are the zones that you could build apartments in those areas. And so with those zones, um, all those different zones, you have the potential, we have the potential for the development of three thousand sixty five more apartment units in our city. Uh, so if you take the current level at four thousand, and you add that, you'd have over seven thousand units of apartments in, in the city. Now, I'm not saying that's a bad thing, and I won't, and I'm not judging that at all. Uh, however, the way the process works right now, uh, with this zoning, if the developer comes forward, uh, and they want to build on this area, on these areas that are zoned for apartments, you never get to see that. The planning board won't get to see that, because it's zoned that way, they present the plan, and that's it, okay, they move forward. Not saying that's a bad thing, but I'm just saying that's the process. And so you, so it's after the fact, it's sort of like the, the horse is already out of the barn, and you can't put them back in. Those are factors that we need to look at when we are looking at our zoning ordinance and things of that nature. Uh, but, but, so, so what's the short term, what's our short term goal? Well, I wanted to recommend to council, a couple of things, maybe three things. So, I asked you for two weeks to get here to, to, to tonight, uh, and, and Kathleen, walk me, yes, and I said, Kathleen, I'm not gonna throw you, I'm not gonna throw you out there tonight, but, but one, I wanna be able to take advantage of our new planning director's knowledge and, uh, abilities to help us try to address this, uh, and, and I'm not gonna say it's a problem, I think it's an opportunity for, for our community to see how we can address that, uh, this, this matter. And so, so I'm asking that we have an opportunity to come back to you, and I asked for sixty days to, to report back to you on what our findings are of, of updating, because I'm, I don't think we'll be at a final place, uh, at that point. But I'd also like to recommend, uh, when, uh, council member Riggs brought this matter up, we got a proposal, and it was back in January from the Bleakley Group, uh, out of Atlanta, to do a, a, a housing study for our city. And they gave us a proposal, and I sent it out to you, to, and, and what I'd like to recommend is we go ahead and engage them to look at our, at our housing, uh, the multifamily housing, and if they can include all of our housing. Some of it, we need to see if that will help us as we're going forward with our, our get program and, uh, other things. Uh, but, but we'd like to go ahead and get them looking at, uh, what factors, and they would also talk with, uh, some of the developers of these apartments. And, and they will come back and report to us, so, and it would take about sixteen weeks to get that report done. And so, so I'd like to recommend that to you as well. And then the other piece that I'd like to recommend to you is that during the budget process, and I mentioned this at, at the council retreat, um, we need to look at some incentives to help increase single family construction within the city limits. Currently, we have a lot of developments that occur outside the city limits, and we'd like for some of that to happen inside the city limits. So as people are looking for housing options inside the city, they, they, they can, it's, it's fine to buy an older home, but if they like new construction, they can make, they, they can have that option inside our city and not on the outskirts of our city. And so, so that's one thing that's gonna be in your budget this year, uh, and I know it's been a while since that has occurred, but again, that's not just for, uh, middle and upper income. That's for all levels of, of housing development that we would recommend that to you.
Are you, um, referring to subdivision incentives or actual single home incentives?
I think I'm talking more about sub.
More of a subdivision, like wa- waiving impact fees, I got it.
Yeah, um, be- because honestly, folks can go outside and they have water systems, their private water systems. And, and so it's hard to compete with some of those private water systems when, when people come to us and, and they have, they have to put out so much money. And they go outside, outside the city limits to build, uh, that, that, I'm just, I'm just biased, I, I like city living. And, and I love everybody to live within the city limits, but, but we need to make it more attractive for developers to build within the city.
Well, it's all good until it rains for a week and you can't do your laundry, right, Kelly? Because of your septic tank.
So, so, so these are my.
That is myth, how she don't have that problem.
So, so these are my recommendations to the council, and, uh, if you, if you will authorize us, we will, we will engage, uh, the Bleakley Group at a price of thirty eight thousand five hundred dollars to move forward with the housing study, uh, and then, um, we will, um, allow Kathleen to steal the opportunity, she, she's gotta get to know her staff, get to know the community, get to know the organization. Uh, and then, uh, and then eventually, one day, we're gonna be able to, where she can shake hands and meet folks outside the city. Uh, it's difficult to, to get to know somebody, you can't even shake their hands, but, but, but that is some of the things that we wanna be able to do. And so with that, um, a- and I'm just, I just wanna make one last pitch. Um, I know when, when council member Riggs brought this forward, he wanted us to do a moratorium. And, and, and I would just simply say, right now, we don't have any projects that own that list. Uh, and, and, and so with the way our economy is going right now, I'd be surprised if we saw a big project come forward in the next four months. Uh, now, I'd be happy if it did, but, but I'd be surprised, uh, and so, so, uh, a moratorium for new development is a harder thing to do, a moratorium for like group homes is, is easier to do because that's not dealing with new construction, a major financial output, uh, but, but, but to put a moratorium on, on apartments, so even single family homes is a hard thing to do. And so right now, it, it, and Mr. Riggs is on, on the, uh, is on Zoom, if we could proceed without having to go to that level, I would recommend that we proceed and, and take care of these other things and move as quickly as we can to get some recommendations back to the council, to get that information back to the council, without having to go to the extreme place, the moratorium on a park. And that would be my recommendation.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Penny, are you any questions, by council?
Can we have a conference session authorized, can you stand with you?
Definitely.
So there's like still me or?
I'm not, attorney.
Would you just, you know, I'm, tell me what, what's, we're looking at, not, not putting a moratorium, it's what you're recommending, but doing this study is gonna take four months from two weeks from now. And then looking at whether we wanna reconsider zoning, in the meantime, we've got all those little spots.
Now, I, the only thing, the only reason I put that zoning information up there for you, uh, and, and I would just simply say to you, uh, when, when the matter brought, came up, and I wasn't sure, uh, what was driving it, but after I saw that zoning information, and, and I'll just be honest, and, and, and clear with y'all, we're trying to be honest with you, I, I simply said, you have every right to be concerned. That's the reason I showed you that information, because you already have, we already have four thousand units of apartments in our city. And, and looking at the zoning map, you can see that we have a potential for three thousand sixty five more apartments. And, and that's not necessarily a bad thing, if you have people to go in there and we can see our population growing. Uh, but I, I just wanted you to know that for a frame of reference, that, that, that there's a reason, that, that doesn't necessarily mean that we shouldn't build, but, but anymore, shouldn't approve any more projects, um, but there are some ways and some regulations that we could be looking at that might cause that not just to be an automatic. But I'm not recommending that to you tonight, I just, that was just for your information, not I was sharing.
But that's a possible remedy for the concern that we have about having so much new dwelling housing up and over, what's falling into this repair and being followed by. So I'm asking, what, what is the process if we found that, uh, from reserving, what is that type? If you got too many empty spots that could accommodate?
Well, well, there, there's a, and, and, and my, the attorney and my staff, there's a process, but I strongly cannot recommend to you. Uh, if a property owner wants to change his own, that, that's their, that's their prerogative. Uh, to change the zoning from, from R four to something else, uh, it would be, uh, a practice that I couldn't recommend to you. Because basically, you'd be down zoning, and I think you'd end up in court somewhere, uh, and, and so, so.
Are we talking about rezoning property?
We could rezone property without, without the property owner coming forward, and I wouldn't recommend it to you. But, but, but what I would say to you is, we are aware, we can look at our processes, uh, and, and that, it just depends on how involved council or the planning board, but right now, a new development coming forward for apartments, doesn't mean you have to go to the planning board. It is, is just simply approved, it's just approved by, at, at staff level, uh, because that's the way, that's the way. And, and if that's the way we want it to be, that's fine, but you make a, you make, uh, you have the ability, make an informed decision. Uh, and, and if this council decides that, that that's the way you want to do it, then, then that's fine, but, but if you wanna change that process, you may have that.
Any other discussion by council? Okay, alright, um, I think that it'd be, uh, missed on us, uh, I think we're all understanding what facing the COVID nineteen situation. Um, as of yesterday, there was, uh, a ruling by Governor Kemp that on Friday, box shops, used to allow some things that next will be opening up, um, on Monday, movie theaters, restaurants, and those, those things will be open as well. Um, right now, the thought process is that we just gotta get our local people, uh, for our city employees put in a position to, um, to execute what to go, that already passed down, so we wanna get our, get our people in a position to do that. And I think the next thing is that we gotta keep putting the word out that we're not out of the woods yet on this thing. Um, the numbers are increasingly going up, um, I think, uh, the death rate rose by nine percent from yesterday to today. Um, so with that being said, we have to let our populace know, um, that it's their responsibility to do everything they can to keep their families safe. We want our business community to know, uh, you know, just because you have the option to open up on Friday and on Monday, uh, if you are not prepared to keep your customers safe, if you are not prepared to, uh, make sure your employees are safe, um, use discernment judgment. And, um, make sure. um, use discernment judgment, and, um, make sure you open your doors when it is safe to do so. Um, so with that being said, I, I do invite everyone for the, uh, six o'clock, uh, six fifteen lobby, uh, where we will go out and we're, we're going to address this, uh, uh, the actions by the governor, and, uh, and I know that there's, uh, there's some queries about what can we do locally to, uh, to further, uh, protect, um, our, our, our populace, and uh, the answer to that is, we can only enforce what the governor has already passed. Uh, so we're going to do that to the best of our ability, um, to make sure that we are fighting every day to, uh, um, we're fighting every day to save the lives of the people of our community. Uh, on a personal note, in the past week, I've known two people that's lost their life, uh, to COVID nineteen. And if there's nothing I can say to, to the city employees, to the citizens of Estates Borough, COVID nineteen is very real. Uh, there is no political agenda behind it, there is no ideological stance that supersedes life. And at the end of the day, our goal is to save as many people as possible. Um, it's not the constitution that makes America greater than people. And our founding fathers, when they say we are endowed by our Creator, our rights come from God, not from any document, not from any politician, not from anyone that, that considers themselves an influence maker. Our rights come from our Creator. And if we want to keep, if we're going to move America in a direction that we want to, the way that we do that is saving lives. Um, so with that being said, um, I want to open it up, if, if any council would like to make any comments, or, or anything, I'd like to open it up to council. Uh, and after we open it up to council, we will close out the work session.
I just want to echo what you just said, Mayor, I'm disappointed that fears about business seem to be making decisions at higher levels than here. That those fears seem to be outweighing the factual information of the numbers of, of the pandemic, that many people are still sick. We do not see the decrease that we're looking for. So I applaud everybody who's doing everything they can to do social distancing, to stay as safe as you can, to protect your employees. Um, so I applaud folks doing that, and I want to tell you that what is allowed and can be done doesn't have to be done. Continue to use your own best judgment, keep yourself, your family, your employees as safe as you can. Stay strong, stay the course, we're, we're not through it yet. So, uh, I want to send all good wishes to those folks who feel like they have to go back to work, and I applaud all the efforts to try to keep them as safe as they can. Thank you.
I also want to piggyback on what's been said, and I know that all of the hairstylists, nail techs, barbers, we are so excited because we haven't been making any money, but I want to remind you guys to do all that you can. If you have to take temperatures, if you have to say nobody can come in, only appointments, one person at a time, whatever you have to do, do what you need to do, because this virus is still going strong, and we still have to protect ourselves, and I'm in practice social distancing and wash your.
Chair, I'll say I went out, um, hadn't been out in quite some time, and I went out Friday, it was, you get a run out of groceries sometime, you know what I mean? And, um, was at, I think, about four different stores. And I, I can tell you, for the most part, by and large, the citizens are, are trying to be social distanced, the staff, right? So there are anecdotal stories of, of people being rude, or, or jerks, or whatever, but I haven't, I can feel the difference when I'm in the stores, I can feel people being aware of the situation, I can feel the effect, uh, as I'm walking through downtown, even or walking down, willing to toe trail. So, I mean, to, I, I know you've been concerned about the traffic at Lowe's, and the traffic at Walmart, and things like this, but I, I, I can tell you, well over ninety-five percent of the folks that I see out there shopping are, are doing what they can do to be safe. I think businesses are doing everything they can to protect their employees, so. Are, are there some anecdotal evidence that think that not happening, sure, but for the most part, this community is really, uh, I've noticed, come together and done everything they can to, to, to make some money, but at the same time, being in safety. I hope that, I know you're not going to those places, so I thought I'd give you a little update.
With that being said, um, is there a motion to withdraw? Is it a second?
This is.
All of them, okay.
Aha.
All right, good evening, Estates Borough.